I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Root to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin by inviting everyone to join us for the Sterling Frights Halloween for Sterling Heights children, 12 years of age and younger. Come to Dodge Park on Saturday, October 20th, so this Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. for live music, a straw maze, hayride, cider donuts, goodie bags for all the participants, flightable activities, and so on and so forth. The first 400 participants will receive a free pumpkin. This is a free program. The city will be collecting canned and boxed fruit items for those in need as well, so we encourage you to do that if you plan on attending. If you'd like more information, you can call our Parks and Recreation Department at (446) 2700. And this is the last city council meeting we'll have before the November 6, 2018 general election. Our city council meeting will be the following day on that Wednesday. And I wanted to review just quickly the items that individuals will see on the ballot in Sterling Heights. Of course, most of what I'm about to summarize is statewide. First, it'll be a total of three ballot proposals for Sterling Heights. Again, these are statewide issues, plus an additional proposal for residents living in the Utica Community School Districts. Let me just summarize them quickly. First, State Proposal 18-1 is a proposed initiated law to authorize and legalize possession, use, and cultivation of marijuana products by individuals who are at least 21 years of age or older, and commercial sales of marijuana through state licensed retailers. State Proposal 18-2 is a proposed constitutional amendment to establish a commission of citizens with exclusive authority to adopt district boundaries for the Michigan Senate, Michigan House of Representatives, and U.S. Congress every 10 years. State Proposal 18-3 is a proposal to authorize automatic and election day voter registration, no reason absentee voting, and straight ticket voting, and add current legal requirements for military and overseas voting and post-election audits to the Michigan Constitution. And then the local proposal that you'll see for those that are in the Utica Community Schools District, which encompasses about 60% of our community, is a bond proposal which reads as follows. Shall the Utica Community Schools, County of Macomb, Michigan, borrow the principal sum of not to exceed $155 million and issue its unlimited tax general obligation bonds for the purpose of defraying costs of making safety and security improvements, including cameras and door systems in school district buildings, equipping, furnishing, and re-equipping and refurnishing school district buildings, facilities and structures, and acquiring school buses and technology equipment, constructing additions to and/or remodeling school district buildings, and improving and developing sites, including playgrounds, athletic fields, facilities, and structures in the school district. Again, that's for the Utica Community Schools. You can actually see a sample ballot, including, you know, where your precinct is if you go to the Michigan Voter Information Center, and that's simply online. All you have to do is Google that. And moving on, once again, I'm very pleased to announce, as you may have read in newspapers or through our media releases, that Sterling Heights is again the safest big city in Michigan according to the 2017 FBI crime statistics. Those are normally released around this time of the year, even though it's for 2017. Sterling Heights ranked the lowest in four out of eight categories that the FBI tracks for annual crime statistics in cities with population over 100,000. Compared to the seven cities in Michigan with a population of over 100,000, Sterling Heights was the lowest in overall violent crimes and property crimes. And I want to take just a minute to highlight those rankings, if I can draw your attention to the screen. So this would be the category for violent crime. Now, there's a number of subcategories under violent crime, but you can see the cities here, over 100,000 in Michigan, and that includes Detroit, Grand Rapids, Lansing, Warren, Clinton Township, Ann Arbor. And you can see in 2017, we are the lowest in the violent crime category that the FBI tracks. The second category of crime is property crime. Again, the same communities. You can see here again, City of Sterling Heights ranks the lowest of these communities. You may recall just recently, Channel 7, WXYZ News highlighted Sterling Heights as being named the sixth safest city in the country. And it's because of statistics like this that continue to keep us in the top tier of safest nationwide, which I think is a most commendable achievement, and it's thanks to the good work of our police department, the men and women in the department that work so hard every day, not to mention just the outstanding community engagement that goes on with residents day in and day out, and the strong partnerships that we have with the business community as well, who strongly support the police department. And it's also illustrative of the mayor and city council's support of the police department, providing them with the tools and equipment they need to perform their jobs in such a way to keep the community safe. So I'm always pleased to discuss these figures, and we look forward to that ranking next year as well. Moving on, the week of October 22nd through the 26th will be Red Ribbon Week, which is recognized by communities working together to raise awareness for substance abuse and prevention. And with us tonight are a couple of speakers, beginning with Lieutenant Mario Bastinelli, who would like to start off and talk about some of the activities going on during that week. Lieutenant Bastinelli.
Hello. I'd like to start out by thanking the mayor, city council, and the city manager, Mark Vanderpool, for allowing us to speak tonight. Now, we're here to talk about the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition and Red Ribbon Week. The Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition was founded on a partnership between the city and CARE of Southeastern Michigan. From there, we began to search for the champions in the community who would help us move forward, our message of working together to continue the community efforts towards a healthy, safe, and drug-free community. Specifically, we are targeting the substance abuse problem that is plaguing our community, state, and nation. And we began officially meeting in May of 2018 and have continued to meet monthly at the police department. Our efforts so far have included a vaping presentation with teens, tobacco vendor education with a partnership that includes a police department, local students, and explorers from the Police Explorer Program. We have supported multiple Addiction 101 presentations at the Sterling Heights Police Department and St. Michael's Church. With the Addiction 101 events, we partnered with several different organizations to provide community resources at all ends of the spectrum, from support, treatment, and recovery. The Coalition has put on multiple community Narcan training throughout the city. We have presented to the high school students at the Holy Martyrs Caldian Catholic Church. We have provided resources to St. Thomas Lutheran Church. We participate in the largest drug takeback efforts in Macomb County. We are a part of the Smart Moves Prevention Program throughout all the schools in Sterling Heights. We partner with councils to provide continued education to the community regarding substance abuse and mental health. The Coalition has participated in National Night Out, and we assist in tobacco and liquor vendor undercover sting operations. Now, as we move forward, we will be attempting to get federal funded grant that is $1.25 million spread out over 10 years. Now, that'd be very significant for our cause with the Coalition. So as you can tell, we have been very busy since we began in May. Now, besides explaining what the Coalition does, I'd like to introduce to you Dunia Barish. She's from the CARE of Southeastern Michigan. And also Cory, he's a student council, he's a president at Stevenson High School. Dunia would like to explain what Red Ribbon Week is and how the council can help. Thank you.
Okay. So hi, everyone. My name's Dunia Barish. I'm a community organizer at CARE of Southeastern Michigan and a member of the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition. So we're here today to introduce the celebration of Red Ribbon Week 2018. Some of you may remember Red Ribbon Week as something that happens in elementary schools or maybe something that your children have done. This week shines a light on drug use awareness and prevention efforts happening throughout the nation, and asks community members to take a proactive and visible stance in supporting a drug-free community. This ribbon represents many things, to name a few. All the efforts by police throughout the nation in order to keep our community safe, the grassroots movements happening all over to reduce the impacts of the opiate epidemic, individuals in recovery and those that we have lost. This ribbon also represents students throughout the nation who will be hearing about how in the next few years they will be making important decisions about their future. Shortly, we will pass out Red Ribbon Week pins that you can all wear in support of Red Ribbon Week, the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition, and most importantly, in dedication to your community that you serve. In addition, the folder you receive, you will find different messages and different ways that you can get involved in Red Ribbon Week in Sterling Heights. Thank you. And to community members, I'm gonna leave pins right up here, and you guys can also participate as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you Lieutenant Bastinelli for being here, and appreciate that presentation very much. We're gonna move on. We have another presentation tonight, and that is a presentation to recognize and congratulate Sterling Heights-based Jets Pizza and the Jets family on the milestone of reaching over 400 stores and for 40 years of successful operations. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool.
Mayor, this evening, Jets Pizza is being recognized for their 40 years of phenomenally successful growth, beginning in a storefront location on Bryant Road and growing to over 400 locations nationwide. City of Sterling Heights is proud of Jets Pizza, not only because of this success, and also because it has remained rooted in this community. Jets Pizza corporate headquarters is located on Mound Road, just north of Metropolitan Parkway. While Michigan has produced multiple pizza chains, Sterling Heights is home to the best. No matter where you are in the country, when you pull up the Jets Pizza website to place your order, look at a menu, you will always see 37-501-Mound-Road-Stirling Heights, Michigan listed on the website. And it's so cool. I always go to the website just to look at that. It's awesome. We wish it could make the font a little bigger. Really awesome. Not only has Jets Pizza helped put Sterling Heights on the pizza map, they have had a major financial impact on the city, contributing millions of dollars in property taxes the last 40 years. In fact, I was just looking at the numbers this evening. The Jets locations that we have in Sterling Heights generate about $100,000 in property taxes a year. Now imagine that over 40 years. And the headquarters generates about $50,000. So I better stop talking because I can see the Jets representative is thinking about an appeal perhaps. Through their franchising growth, they have employed thousands of employees. It's success stories like Jets Pizza that have helped contribute to the city of Sterling Heights' overall success. And Mayor, there is a resolution before you and the city council this evening recognizing and congratulating Jets Pizza and the Jets family on the milestone of reaching 400 stores and for 40 years of successful operations. In addition, County Commissioner Joseph Romano and State Representative Henry Yanez are present this evening to also present Jets Pizza with resolutions from the county and from the state. After their presentation and comments, Jaclyn Jets is here to offer some comments as well. And then the mayor and city council are invited to the front of the day as to congratulate Jets Pizza and pose for a photo. So now, Mayor, I'm very pleased to introduce County Commissioner Joseph Romano.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor, city council, Mr. Vanderpool, and counselor Mark. Mr. Kusupsi, nice to see all you people. It's a little different standing in front of you instead of sitting down and looking at you. Before I get started, Jackie, come on up here. This is Jackie Jets. I want to introduce you to the whole council. Just on a personal note, I've had the pleasure, and honestly, that's the only pizza I eat, and I'm not saying that because she's here. It's good pizza. It's been around my neighborhood for a long, long time. The one on 14, or 15 and Shainer's been there for years and years. And Jets makes a great product, and I think if you haven't tried it, you really should. And along that note, if you guys will bear with me, I want to thank this particular council and the administration because the roads leading to a lot of these Jets, which in my case would have been 15 Mile Road, which would have been 17 Mile Road, which would also be Ryan, through the initiative of this council and this administration, folks, we have great roads to ride on to get to Jets Pizza. And I personally want to thank you for that, and I want to thank this council and administration. So having said all that, this is a proclamation from the Board of Commissioners, an official proclamation of the Board of Commissioners from Macomb County, Michigan. It's a proclamation commemorating the 40th anniversary of Jets Pizza. Myself, Joseph Romano, and Robert Majak, who is also County Commissioner here in Sterling Heights, and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, offers the following proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners proudly celebrates and recognizes Jets Pizza and wishes to publicly congratulate the company and its founders as they celebrate their 40th anniversary. And whereas Jets Pizza was founded by Eugene Jets, who partnered with his brother John Jets to open the doors to Jets Party Shop and Pizzeria in Sterling Heights, Michigan in 1978. And whereas, on his way, Eugene, to purchase a new home, Eugene made the life-altering decision, instead of signing the lease on a space that would first become Jets' location instead of buying that house. Eugene and his brother John then began their momentous journey in the pizza industry. And whereas from this beginning, the Jets Brothers created a Detroit-style deep-dish pizza using their mother's secret family recipe, which Jackie will share with us tonight. No, I'm just kidding. The product put Jets Pizza on the map and on their way to making deep-dish history. And whereas, to this day, Jets Pizza ensures their products meet all customers' expectations by using the freshest vegetables, Italian herbs and spices, and dough prepared each day by hand, and hand-grated premium mozzarella cheese. And whereas, Jets Pizza continues to grow through their commitment to quality ingredients and extensive menu selections. The first location has since grown to more than 400 stores, as Mr. Vanderpool has mentioned, in 20 different states, with continued growth expected as Jets Pizza celebrates many more milestones to come. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners speaking for, on behalf of all county citizens, that by these present, the Macomb County Board of Commissioners hereby publicly acknowledge and express appreciation and congratulations to Jets Pizza on the momentous occasion of its 40th anniversary. Be that further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Jets Pizza in testimony of the highest esteem, which is held by the Macomb County Board of Commissioners for Jets Pizza, for you. I want a hug. If I may, I'd like to introduce Representative Yanez, who also has a proclamation for you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Romano. Well, I can't top that. Nobody can top Joe Romano. I would like to say that your phenomenal growth, as the city manager said, has contributed to my phenomenal growth. We love Jets Pizza. Every time family comes in from out of town, they want to order Jets Pizza. So we love your product. We love what you do. When I ordered this tribute, I didn't know if you liked round or square, so I got square. And so all I'm gonna say is, on behalf of a grateful state, thank you for everything you do for your community.
I'm Jackie Jets, and I'm accepting these awards on behalf of Eugene and John Jets families, as well as our partners, the Galloways. We're very honored to receive these awards, as it shows our dedication and commitment to the community and the city of Sterling Heights. We've been here for 40 years, and we don't plan on moving anywhere. Thank you. And we wish Eugene was still with us today, my dad, and he'd be proud, and here's to 40 more years with you guys. Thank you.
Now, Jackie, if you guys want to stay up there, I'm gonna, we've got a resolution and a plaque to present on behalf of the city too. So I'm gonna ask the city council to join me, and we'll give this to you and take a picture. You don't mind? Yeah, you two jump.
I'll tell you where to go, Jack.
Come on, we gotta get, your class gotta be over here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. 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 Thank you. Thank you.
All right, council, before everybody leaves, we do have a resolution. And is there anyone who'd like to make that resolution?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Saroski.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Sterling Heights, County of Macomb, and the state of Michigan does hereby recognize and congratulate Jets Pizza Incorporated and the Jets family on the milestone of reaching 400 stores and for 40 years of successful operations. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mayor, pro tem?
I just want to say thank you again to Jaclyn, and I also know Jim Galloway quite well, so congratulations and thank you to him and his brother Jeff. We just had Jets Pizza back tonight. So it is our favorite for our family, and it's our favorite for most of the people I know in the city. So thank you again, and we really appreciate your business and staying here.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. I also would like to recognize the charitable things that Jets does in our community. As a Bam Booster Executive Board Member, I know that the Jets Pizza on 15 and Shainer, they're always on speed dial with us for all of our events, give us a fair price with an awesome product, and also sponsor fundraising nights, Jet Pizza nights, that are very successful. So they work well with all the schools and all the different organizations, and I appreciate that as well. So thank you for all you do in our community.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
I would also like to say thank you. Your store on 14 Mile Road east of Ryan has been our Friday night source of dinner for so many years. My two oldest sons grew up on Jets Pizza. They still are growing on Jets Pizza. So thank you.
Mr. Radke.
Oh, I have nothing.
Oh, okay, sorry. Anyone else, counsel? If not, just a few brief comments. So Jets is my favorite pizza, and I eat a lot of pizza, and I love Jets Pizza, and my family loves Jets Pizza, and I'm proud, as the mayor of this city, that Jets Pizza's here in Sterling Heights. It's really one of the coolest things I think about Sterling Heights, is that we've got Jets Pizza here. As Mr. Vanderpool was saying, you know, he likes to go on the website and see that it says Jets Pizza. My dad is actually a franchisee. He's part owner of a franchise in Aurora, Colorado, so the reach is pretty long, and I like getting updates from him. He keeps telling me, you know, we did our best week, and we had our best. Well, when I went out there for a ribbon cutting, I've never been to a ribbon cutting for a Jets in Sterling Heights, by the way, but I have been to one in Aurora, Colorado, and the mayor of Aurora was out there too. And all over the flour and the sauce and everything, it just says Sterling Heights, Michigan. So I thought that was pretty cool. So, you know, thousands of workers and, you know, millions of customers throughout the country are enjoying Jets Pizza, and we're proud to have you here in the city of Sterling Heights. We get it, like Mrs. Kosky said, it's a pretty regular occurrence, probably more than once a week, I would say. My kids like the round. I'm trying to get them onto the square. I like the barbecue chicken the best, but my wife won't eat that. She likes the Italian sausage. So we end up getting like four or five pizzas for this family, and so, but it's all right. We graze on it over the whole weekend, and we love Jets Pizza. We love having you here, and thank you for everything you do for our community, and keep up the great work, and we'll keep ordering Jets, you know, because life is short, so we eat better pizza, right? All right, counsel, anyone else? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations again on 40 years. All right. With that, go to my second favorite business in Sterling Heights, Cassidy Steel. And we have a public hearing to consider the application for Cassidy Structural Steel Incorporated for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate at (40675-MOUND-Road). Presentation from our city assessor, Marsha Magier Smith.
industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for a proposed real property investment of $1,369,272 at (40675-MOUND-Road). This real property investment will facilitate the construction of a 25,950-square-foot expansion of the applicant's existing facility. The applicant will further invest approximately $4,519,728 for personal property at the expanded facility. The cumulative investment of $5,889,000 will create- at the expanded facility. The cumulative investment of $5,889,000 will create 10 new jobs in the city. The real property is located within an industrial development district, which was established by the city council on June 3rd of 2008. Cassidy Steel has been a manufacturing presence in Sterling Heights since 2001. And based on the adopted city guidelines for I F E C tax abatement, recommendation is being made to approve the applicant's application for an I F E C term of seven years. The proposed real property investment would generate an estimated increase of $41,160 in new city tax revenue over the recommended seven-year tax abatement term. This amount would, of course, be additional revenue to the city on top of their current tax bills that they pay now. Applicant's creation of 10 new jobs in the city will also generate an overall positive economic impact for the regional economy of about 1.8 million annually. Tonight, we have with us the CFO of Cassidy Steel, Mr. Paul Callme. He's going to address city council and answer any questions you have regarding proposed investment of this I F E C application. Mr. Callme?
Thank you, Marsha. Thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel and Mr. Koshupski. As Marsha said, I'm Paul Callme. I'm the CFO of Cassidy Steel, as well as a 50-year resident of Sterling Heights. Just a little bit more about Cassidy Steel and maybe help you understand a little bit about our growth and why this is a worthy investment for the city. Cassidy Steel was formed by its two founders, Bruno and Robert Cassidy, back in 2001. The company is a full-service structural steel engineering fabrication and erection contractor. In that short time, the company's acquired three buildings in Sterling Heights. In 2006, we purchased our first building, a 15,000-square-foot facility on 19 and 1/2 mile in Merrill. At that time, we employed 12 people. In 2009, during the height of the financial crisis, our company moved to purchase a 60,000-foot abandoned and water-damaged building on mound and 18 mile, whereby we spent $1,500,500 in improvements in addition to the cost of the building. At that time, we added an additional 10 employees, and we started and grew our erection company to 20 employees. Then later in 2016, we purchased another building, a 13,000-square-foot building. It's adjacent to our property, our Monroe facility on Brentwood. There, we manufacture our own parts, whereby we add an additional three employees and invest an additional $3 million of new equipment. Again, this current expansion on our mound road facility is for a 24,000-square-foot receiving bay. In addition to that, we're putting on a new automation fabrication line, and we're projecting a total spend of $6 million. With this expansion, we anticipate that our growth will move to a total of 58 employees in our Sterling Heights facility, and our erection crew to about 40. So, basically, over the 16 years that are... 12 years that we've been in business, we've spent about $16 million of real and personal property in Sterling Heights. So, with that, if you have any questions about our history of the company, or about our proposal and our expansion, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and we'll hear from the audience if there's any comments. And then, if the council has any questions, we can call you back up, okay? So, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to adopt the resolution approving the application of Cassidy Structural Steel, Incorporated for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate at 40675 Mound Road, parcel number 10-17-226-039-000, for a period of seven years in accordance with the guidelines established by the city council. And the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to sign, as applicable, all documents required in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
I think this is pretty much routine for a company that's expanding. We've made no exceptions. You're following all the state guidelines, and you certainly meet them. I'm excited about 10 new jobs, because certainly that does add a lot to our economy. So, I don't have any questions. I think this is a great opportunity for another one of our good businesses in Sterling Heights to stay in Sterling Heights. So, I wish you nothing but the best.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Schmidt. Or, Mrs. Zarco, Mrs. Schmidt, anything? Counsel, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke, sorry about that.
No problem. I just want to thank you for expanding in Sterling Heights. Since I've been on council for a year now, we've had several of these come through, and I think that it speaks to our city's ability to do business, that people want to not only locate in Sterling Heights, but also expand and hire more employees in Sterling Heights. So, thank you so much for your investment.
Counsel, anyone else? Just a brief comment. Cassidy Steel is not only a good business in Sterling Heights, they're a good kind of corporate partner for the city of Sterling Heights. Cassidy was one of the companies that participated in the Innovate Mound Initiative, and I really think that the public-private partnership there was what put us over the top. And if you're not familiar, Innovate Mound is the initiative that generated $100 million in federal grant money in order to get mound road completed. And it will be completed. We've got the portion from 14 to 18 with temporary repairs, and that's going to be opening up soon. But the $100 million, really $175 million project, that's going to be a benefit to everyone in Sterling Heights, and really everyone in Macomb County and the region. Partners like Cassidy Steel really helped put that over the edge, I think, and show to the federal government that it's not just important to us, it's not just important to some politicians. It's really important to the people who are out there producing jobs and investing in our community. So, I want to, on a personal note, thank you for that. And, you know, it's my pleasure to support this as well. So, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is a consideration item, and this is to consider nominations to the city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, I believe this is the Board of Ordinance Appeals One. It's an open seat. This is a council appointment to a partial term ending June 30th, 2019. Is there anyone who has a nomination? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to... or, I'm sorry, to postpone to the November 7th, 2018 council meeting? I need a motion? Say so, moved?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is another consideration item, and this is to consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on these appointments? If not, counsel, there are three appointments to the Arts Commission. These are open seats that have differing term-ending dates. Two end on June 30th, 2022, and one ends on June 30th, 2021. This is a one-step process. Is there anyone who has appointments to the Arts Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to appoint Judith Foley to the Arts Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2021, with the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I had the pleasure of talking to Mrs. Foley on the phone. She's a jewelry designer in our city. She's been very active, and I think she'll make a great addition to the Arts Committee.
All right, very good. Anyone else, counsel? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are two more Arts Commission appointments. Is there anyone who'd like to make an appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved to appoint Wendy Popko and Gary Lusk to the Arts Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2022, subject to the appointees meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Sure. Mayor Taylor, just Wendy Popko is actually the artist that did the Bear mural on the gas station across the street. I think she's a perfect fit for our Arts Commission. And Mr. Lusk has become a beautiful photographer in our community as well, also a very good fit for that board. And so, I think that's it.
All right, counsel, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have one opening also on the Beautification Commission. This is a council appointment to a partial term ending June 30th, 2021. Is there anyone who's prepared to make an appointment to the Beautification Commission tonight?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Moved to appoint Kathleen Martin. Got to go to two places for this. And if somebody could tell me when the term ending is.
6:30, 2021.
6:20, 6:30, 21, okay. To appoint Kathleen Martin to the Beautification Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2021, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? If not, I'll close that portion and go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, any items tonight?
Nothing further, mayor.
Counsel, any reports, new business? Mayor Protem Sarowski?
I just wanted to do two things. Commend the city and the police department for helping us get the safe city designation. We've lived in this city for almost 30 years, my husband and I, and it is very important for the vitality and the vibrancy of a city to make sure that you're safe. People do not want to live in an unsafe community, so that really helps really make a difference in our community and how we all feel and keeping us all together. But also to Red Ribbon Week, I and myself and Mrs. Kosky are on the Drug Free Coalition for Sterling Heights. And this is a coalition of community members. It's not a support group for people with, you know, people who have family. This is a group of people who are actively out there to help do some of the many activities that Lieutenant Bastianelli did mention. And so, I'm asking that if anyone else is interested in the community, to please contact myself on my email or by my city phone, and you can find that on the website, if you're interested in helping us with our activities, we would greatly appreciate it. The more the merrier. Many hands make light work. So, again, thank you very much. And that's all I have, mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to commend the Sterling Heights Fire Department for their open house that I had the pleasure of attending last Sunday. It was an excellent presentation. You could see how much fun the children had watching The Jaws of Life and getting to look at all the fire apparatuses. And I just think that Chief Martin is doing a wonderful job over there, and we should be proud of our fire department. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? Mrs. Schmidt?
Mayor Taylor, thank you. I'm going to read this so I don't misquote, since I got the time wrong on the fire open house. The Department of Public Works is starting their annual Ken Stempowski Fruit Drive. Employees of the Sterling Heights Department of Public Works are gearing up for another season of collecting non-perishable foods. They will be collecting... Non-perishable foods will benefit the Macomb Food Program, are now being accepted at the Sterling Heights Public Works Facility between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. That's on 18 Mile Road between Ryan and Mound, Monday through Friday, and at the Community Relations Department located in the lower level of City Hall, weekdays from 8:30 to 5:00. Collections will be accepted through Friday, December 10th. Monetary donation checks made out to the Macomb Food Program are also appreciated. If you have any other questions, you can call Community Relations at 446-CITY. But this is a great opportunity for our whole community to show the world out there what we're made of and how we take care of the people here in Macomb County. And I invite everyone to help out the folks at the DPW, raise lots of non-perishables. That's it.
All right, thank you, counsel. Anyone else? Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. In March of this year, when several of us attended the Michigan Municipal League Conference that was in Lansing, there was a nonprofit magazine that was there that had a documentary entitled Michigan Divided. And this is... They've done... They've been in business for years, and they do a lot of research. They're nonpartisan, and they're nonprofit. What I found interesting about this documentary was that they followed several different people over the course of a year after the 2016 election, asking them, in some cases, how they voted. They were from different areas of the state. What I came away with was that, as we sit here and we think about what happens in our family and in what happens in our city, we see one perspective. But when you listen to the other people from other parts of the state, even though we're all in the state of Michigan, they had a different perspective and different problems that were going on in their communities that maybe we don't have here. So, it made me think, if there was that many different perspectives in one state, it's just as interesting to see that across the country, how, as divided as we are now, if we would just sit back and listen to what people were saying, that we might be able to understand better. So, the Bridge Magazine left an open invitation to show this documentary at any of the cities throughout the state. So, we are lucky enough to be able to present this on Tuesday, a week from today, October 23rd. It will be at the Velocity Center from 6:30 to 8:00. And I think it's a good learning experience for everyone. And I'm looking at the students here that are listening to us tonight, that if you could probably go back and talk to your teachers about this, it would be good for extra credit. But what it brings about is that how we want to be inclusive of one another, how we want to respect other people's feelings. And it has... Nobody's trying to change anybody's mind. It's just that I think the biggest thing is you're just listening to other people and what they're saying, and you don't have to say anything back. That is probably the biggest lesson throughout the whole documentary, is you are just listening. What was... At the end of the documentary, they bring all the people together to actually meet. And as they have these different viewpoints, it's not like anybody's trying to change anybody's, you know, mind, but it's just a great discussion. It's a good experience. And if you have a chance to do this next Tuesday, I think it's worth your hour and a half of time.
That's it.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else? If not, I would just encourage everybody to get out and vote Tuesday, November 6th. Our next council meeting won't be until Wednesday, November 7th because of the election. And so, like I said, I encourage you all to get out there and vote. And if there are any students who are 18, I encourage you to get out and vote. And if you're not yet, then vote when you turn 18. And thank you for participating in the meeting tonight, counsel. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.